Good evening. We call to adjourn the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that we have six members of the council present. Councilman Mars Nordfeld is excused. With that, we'll begin with our opening ceremony. I've invited Sam Johnson to take a few minutes and share with us some great things.
Thank you, Mayor. We had some beautiful pictures and video to show you that is not working, so I apologize. But we do have a nice poster in the back that goes over the event that we have coming up on Thursday, which is our fourth annual Spring Fest. This is going to be held -- this is sponsored by the Clean and Beautiful Committee, and it's going to be held at Centennial Park and the Family Fitness Center just on the lawn that is -- what is that? That's south of it where West Fest typically is. And it's a great activity for the whole family. And we're going to have about 30 outside vendors. We're going to have 17 city booths that are going to be available for people. And some of the vendors and some of the activities are planned. We have the Parks and Rec Department that is going to be planting some trees and showing people how they can plant trees when they bring them in. We're going to have Jordan Valley Medical, which will be doing some screenings at the event. And that will be things like blood pressure and other screenings that they'll be doing there. The Granger High School Drama Club will be doing face painting. So if you're looking for some beautiful art on your face, this will be a great opportunity. Talent levels will vary depending on the person that's painting your face, so that can be exciting. Our youth city council will be doing some food, and they'll be doing hot dogs and other things. And they do have permits, so we're good on that. People will be able to enjoy some good food out there. Ace Disposal, as well as our public works, will be doing things on recycling. Home Depot is going to have a large portion of the place where they're going to be doing some different events and talking to people about home improvement. Our police and fire departments will both be there. I believe a fire truck will be there for kids to be able to look at as well and some police apparatus as well. American Red Cross, American Heart Association, Salt Lake County, and others will be there to talk about home improvements, yard improvements, spring activities, and things like that. So it really is a neat activity. We got a good turnout. And it looks like we've gotten the rain out of our system for the week, because tomorrow looks fairly nice, which should be a good lead-in to Thursday. Beautiful weather and wonderful times for the whole family. So I hope to see you there. If you're there, I will take pictures of you. So I look forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's our opening ceremony. We do have some scouts here tonight. I probably didn't mention to you that we generally invite one of the young men to come up and introduce the troop or pack or whatever. We don't get into personal information, but your troop number, what you're working on here tonight, and maybe a little bit about -- oh, I can see a scout shirt, so it's scouts.
Cub Scouts.
Cub Scouts, okay. And then maybe just the schools you attend. How's that? So I'll let you figure out. Come on up right here to our microphone, so... Okay. And you can tell us your D N number or whatever.
So we're the Weblis Pack. Most of us probably go to Diamond Ridge Elementary, most of us at least.
What are you working on?
Building a better world.
Building a better world.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your coming tonight. And hope it be a fun council meeting.
You're welcome.
I think that was the only one for any special group that's here? I mean, they're more than just scouts, but they're the only ones that usually come, so... Guess we could have everybody come up and tell us what they're working on. Yeah. Okay. Well, our minutes are next. Motion on the minutes.
Move to approve the April 9th minutes?
Any other comments? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Pass unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next is our public comment period. We have a couple of people have signed up. And it... In case anyone else though decides they want to, because we do have other visitors here tonight. Public comment period is for individuals to share information with us. It is not a debate. It's not a question and answer period. It is simply your time to share information. And so maximum of five minutes, and we have a little clock just in case. Couple of times we've had them go over it. Usually everyone's pretty good. And all comments are directed to the mayor. That was set up wrong before me to ensure that we don't get into anything inappropriate. I'll just stop there. We've had some challenges in the past, so... With that, we'll start with those who officially signed up. Oh, yes. There's also a public hearing, so if you're here to speak to the issue regarding the self-storage facilities, you can do that separately. And that one is a little more flexible. And so if you're here to speak to that, skip the public comment period. Everything else, public comment period. Okay. Bert Davis. There he is.
I'm here to complain about the problems I've been having primarily with a neighbor for the last six or seven years. He's violated numerous laws and ordinance and animal control and he repeat offender. And I don't seem to be getting any results in solving the problem. And there have been turned -- lots, many calls, the police department and that, that over... I could have called a hundred times, but that's maybe 25. And they don't seem to get resolved because they don't only talk to him and then walk off. And when they walk off, they laugh. And they come back and repeat again and again and again, whether it's noise... It used to be a problem with parties at 2:00 in the morning out there screaming and playing their music. But that hasn't been for a couple, three years. But there's other issues of them playing music on the driveway on the weekends usually, loud enough I can hear in my whole house, you know? And sometimes the police departments address it, sometimes they haven't. And particularly the last two times I've called the police department, they never showed up. One was regarding another neighbor that was copying their parking habits of parking 90 degrees of curb. And they parked in front of the fire hydrant, and they called up the sergeant. "Why haven't you come after 12 hours to solve this?" And he says, "There ain't nothing wrong with that." He says, "They can park in front of the fire hydrant, and they can park 90 degrees of curb. On a circle, there's not a lot of parking, so it's okay." And as far as the noise, you know, the guy... I called up the sergeant who was in charge, and then I still didn't get any results from him. A bunch of nonsense that they never showed up on them two incidents. That's why I'm showing up here today. That there's many problems there. I can't tell you today. But I think, I believe that it should be a policy of the police departments. If they can verbally talk to them once, and then they have to come back a second time, they should start citing them. That's the only thing that will change their behavior. Some people, it takes money before they change their behavior or some other action. And on this green sheet here, that neighbor's violating almost every one of them. I thought it was a good idea, sent that out there. Some people will change, and some people won't. And I don't think that the way they're addressing it is solving any problems. And I'm sure I'm not the only one out there frustrated with the system that's not working. And so I hope you can come up with some way to solve this.
That's all I got to say. Would you state your address just for the record?
5519 West Deer Middle Circle.
And we've got contact information here. When they sign this up, we get it.
I've emailed Jake over here on this problem. And I've talked to Officer Jepson too, but that wasn't... Nothing was happening, nothing working out, so that's why I'm here today and hope that you guys can come up with a solution to this problem. I think honestly that the only way you're going to change these people's behavior and other people is you give them maybe one warning. And the second warning, "I ain't going to warn you no more. I'm going to cite you, and it's going to cost you money." Some of your departments has solved the problem, you know? But the other ones, no. The ordinance bar, he keeps on repeating that one thing to another over the last several years, you know, whether it's selling 65 cars a year out of his house, running a scrap metal setup there where he had probably sold and stored about 8,000 pounds of copper wire to bringing unoperated vehicles, unlicensed vehicles there and you name it. But anyway, that's what I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Jim Beeson.
Good evening, Mayor. I had the same issues as he had in my neighborhood with noise and parking enforcement. Parking enforcement has their own phone number and email and stuff. You can take pictures and send it. If you do that near the squeaky wheel, they will come out and take care of it. On the noise thing, it is a Class B misdemeanor, which I believe is a $400 fine. They will come out. I have one neighbor that likes to play mariachi music, and it was really, really bad. Squeaky wheel called several times, and they've come out, and it hasn't happened since they've done it. So just a couple of things. Channel 2 News last night talked about our shelter and Taylor'sville leaving because we gas animals. They didn't mention that we are a no-kill shelter, that it's only done under certain circumstances. I did bring that to Lane's attention. I think that needs to be addressed, because they were misrepresenting West Valley and making it look like Taylor'sville's looking at leaving under our things of going to Salt Lake because we have a gas shelter, our gas chamber that euthanizes pets. So it was kind of misleading and kind of irritated me, especially, you know, I'm a pet lover, so... The code enforcement thing. I actually did the same thing that our city manager did. Drove around my neighborhood, in and out that I normally do, about 25 homes. I sat in a hearing, in the hearing, watched the hearing for an hour and a half, so I kind of saw what they went after. Out of the 25 homes, there's about seven of them that I found for sure violations. Two of them major violations. I mean, there's no way you can't drive by without seeing it. I believe we could throw a dart on a map and do that in almost every single neighborhood. I don't know what the fix is, except more citizens complaining, but did you get more enforcement? It could be a double-edged sword. But I even thought I might be in a violation. I have a pallet with bark on it that's outside my shed that I'm going to put in my yard. Technically, that's a violation if it's being stored outside, I think. You know, how far do we go on stuff like that? So let's see. You guys were either misled or lied to in your study meeting. I let the council, a couple of the council members know exactly what it was. When it came to that letter, it was a physical letter, physical envelope, not an email. I said, "When I heard that, you know, that that is totally wrong for them to come in to say that to you guys." Sitting in that hearing, going back to the notification and taping it on the door, there is an officer that does it on a pretty regular basis. Sitting in the hearing, that's how I found out. There was one case in that hearing where the mail was mailed to the address. The renters did not know whose it was because it was a management company that dealt with it. Soon as they put the notice on the door though, they were able to get a hold of them. They were able to get it fixed. So putting the notice on the door got immediately action from them. I believe in the -- I'm going to bring it up since it was brought up in the study meeting. The Robertson case, the exact same thing would have happened. When he even, you know, when he found out supposedly, whatever, he took care of it immediately. He fixed the problems. It shows the good -- now, that doesn't happen all the time, because there's other big ones that happened on that same area where it's back as bad as it was. Yeah, so once again, I go back to that being on the, you know, taping the notice of the door. How hard is it to do? And there is an officer, you know, that does take the extra step. And even Officer Tumi, when I talked to him, he talks to the people. They take that extra step. When you're going to find somebody $70,000, which happened in the court hearing, that's a lot of money, and the person didn't show up. You know, that's a lot of money, you know? And not being able to prove to me, prove you delivered it. Taking a picture of the notice on the door is proof. That's better than presuming, I'm not going to say assume, presuming that the post office did their job the right way. My time's up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Okay. When you come though, because we don't have information for you, if you'll state your name and address so we have contact information.
My name is Gregory Thomas. My address is 6908 West Blackstone Drive. I'm here on behalf of myself and my neighbors for the purchase of city property. That is approximately at 6867 West Parkway Boulevard. We were here last week, and we posted with Aaron Flader. It's basically just land that is weeds and filled behind our homes that we'd like to purchase. And my wife and I have both grown up in West Valley City. We're on our third home in the Hunter Village community. We'd just like to extend our boundary lines along with our other neighbors, and we're all in agreeance with it. This was, you know, once prime horse property, horse pasture. I know I baled many bales of hay on that with my grandfather. This would just help the city meet its goal of larger lot sizes and enhance the value of our homes and help improve the property that is now just weeds and filled. And we'd also like to have the consideration that the area that is west of Gerald Wright Elementary and northeast of Foxtel Park be improved, so the families would be able to enjoy the current trail system that runs through Hunter Village. It deadends at Foxtel Park and Gerald Wright and behind our homes. It doesn't wrap around our neighborhood. We just would like to get some grass put in so that there isn't the goat head stickers that our kids are getting in their bike tires, our pets are getting in their paws, and we also get in our shoes. We'd just like our request, that we just like to be considered for our proposal is all. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else. We'll close the public comment portion. We'll come back. Mr. Powell, any comments?
I don't have any tonight. Thanks, sir.
Council members? Okay. Let's see. So although we can't discuss policy here, just so you're aware, that's a state law. We can make some brief comments. But what we'll do is Mr. Davis's issue on that, I'd like to add that to the agenda next week just to do some follow-up. And maybe Councilman Fifty Simano can help us with that. You know, appears he has some background information on it. And then also, the animal shelter. That one kind of left me up in the air. Kind of, I don't know if we have a public relations problem there or what.
I also saw the news broadcast, and I've been talking with Taylor'sville. And county animal services is making a big pitch for Taylor'sville to go back to using them rather than us. The reason they're using us is because the county wasn't doing it before. So they're just working around that. But I agree that the coverage by the news agencies was not favorable to West Valley at all.
Mr. Powell, any comments on that? Should we do anything with that? Should we add that to our agenda to have a discussion in pursuit of...
I don't think so, Mayor. I mean, as Councilman Christiansen said, Taylor'sville got involved in a contract with us for really particular reasons at the time they did, which has been, I don't know, something like eight years ago. So 10 years ago, or a little bit more even. And at the time, the reason that they did that was they weren't being serviced adequately by the county, as Councilman Christiansen pointed out. They didn't like the service, and they didn't like the price that they're paying. And so they negotiated a contract with us, which really basically consists of two parts. One is to help shoulder their share of the construction of the animal shelter, which we then built. And the other was for the maintenance of their operations and services. The way our contract is structured is that if Taylor'sville were to leave that service, we protected ourselves, and we still would work with them in the realm of actually sheltering pets as they went along, but they would still be responsible for their portion of the brick and mortar cost of building a shelter. Now, from an operations and a contract standpoint, I think that we are doing as good or better a job as we ever have done with them. But that doesn't mean that they don't have the right or the responsibility maybe even to look at whatever would be the best deal for them from a contract and an operation standpoint at any given time. So every time that our contract comes up for renewal or if the county or any other entity for that matter would come and propose some concept to Taylor'sville, they looked at it, and they haven't looked at it in the past. Will they, do we have any indications that they're more serious about taking it this time? No, we do not. Are our services worse? Do they have complaints about our service? No. This seems to be more just about exploration of what their contract is.
Probably going any further, we might want to put it on our agenda if we want to do more discussion on it.
Right, and I don't really see the need for it, but of course, we obviously can if you'd like, Mayor.
Okay. And unless someone on the council wants to push that onto our agenda?
I mean, the issue of accurate and unbiased news reporting, we could pass a resolution, but I'm not sure it would do any good, so I don't believe to address that on our agenda.
But we can always, I mean, we do great at getting information out to the public. We could always do that. Okay. Then any other comments from the council? Seeing none, then we'll go on to our public hearing. So if you were here to talk about this, this is a proposal on application ZT-2-2019. And we will actually take the action on our ordinance 19-10 document. This is a zone text change or a change to our code to prohibit self-storage facilities in C2 and I think now it includes C1?
Let me see now. In the C2, C3, they're currently allowed in C2 and C3 as well as...
Okay, so it's C2 and C3 that would no longer be allowed in. But it will still can be able to continue to be in manufacturing zones. Those, of course, that are already in or have made application will be grandfathered in. This is for the future. There are a number of those rounds, and there are still lots of areas where they can be placed. So that's the issue before us. With that introduction then, we'll open the public comment portion. Is there anyone here to speak to this? Another exciting item that drew so many people here. So it's not a huge change, but we thought it was appropriate to do. So seeing no one here to speak to this issue, I'll close public comment. We'll come back to the council then.
So Mayor, just clarification. So we're not allowing it in L1?
LI?
LI.
Yeah, Light Industrial.
As well. So LI, C3, C2, C1. And did we change it so it was outdoor storage and indoor storage?
Good question. I would have to refer...
I'm trying to look really quick.
Eric doesn't know, and as I mentioned in the earlier meeting, unfortunately due to an emergency, we lost our CED people, so we might have to actually roll through the ordinance there to find that out, which we can't do.
Yeah, so on here, it does not look like they changed, as we recommended last week, that outside storage not be allowed in C3 or LI?
Light Industrial, yeah.
Okay.
Well, is outdoor storage still a self-storage facility, or are they different?
Yeah, they're an outdoor storage of, like, you take in other people's...
Right, I understand. Put your motorhome in the boat or whatever there. But is that not a self-storage facility? Is it...
No, it's different on the actual ordinance. So we have outdoor storage...
So my information before the meeting was that all of the changes that the council requested last week have been made. But if there's a question to that, or if you'd like to make further changes, then I would just recommend forwarding it to the next meeting. Can we do that?
Or can we just ask that in the motion?
Yeah, we can do that too. Make the change. We can do that as well.
Does anybody else remember that we were going to do that, or is it just a conversation in my own little mind?
I recall we did discuss move. Yeah, and unfortunately, I was there last week.
We talked, but I think it's a good thing. Yeah, we have to do that. We talked about it.
There was some comment though that was made about that that was covered in another section of the code. Is there a separate section for outdoor storage?
It's in this table, so I don't think so.
Yeah, this is Title VII, which is where it would be if it would be anywhere else.
So if there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion. Sorry, that chocolate fudge is getting to my throat. That we pass the ordinance with the exception of adding that there will be no outside storage in C3 and LI, but it'll be conditional use in M to follow the inside storage, self-storage. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we have that language.
Is that clear enough that the language can be put in there?
Yeah.
So the way the change to the ordinance, the addition to the ordinance says, notwithstanding, self-storage facilities are only allowed in the manufacturing M zone. Self-storage facilities shall meet the commercial design standards in Part 3 of Chapter 7-7. I think if we just change that to say self-storage and outdoor storage facilities are only allowed in the manufacturing M zone, that would be the change.
Yeah, and change the...
Right, so the table would reflect that change as well. So is that clear?
Well, it was clear. Now I'm not so sure I'm clear anymore. So maybe we just restate?
So the ordinance change that's before us is to make new self-storage facilities only available in the M zone.
Correct.
And I think the proposal is that that be approved with the addition that it be amended so that not only would it affect self-storage facilities, but outdoor storage facilities.
As well.
As well.
Okay, so that language is clear to me. I don't know if there's any further implication to that that I don't know about, which we might have to bring... might have to bring back to you, but yes, we have that.
Well, there wasn't any change anywhere else, was there?
They would just have to change the table to reflect that.
So the language to include self, or to include outdoor storage on the table to reflect.
Yeah, it shows. Can I see the self-storage?
Outside storage is conditional use in the LI zone.
In the C3.
In the C3, and so they just have to change those two on the table.
That sounds right.
Okay, yes, there is a line for outdoor storage.
Yes, there is.
And so, yeah, that would change the box. C3 and LI would also change. So there are three places where it would change. It would change in the language, it would change in the chart on the line outdoor, outside storage, under column C3 and LI, and those would be changed from, uh.
Conditional use.
Conditional use to X.
In C3 and LI.
Yeah.
Okay, we got that very clear now?
Yep.
Okay. With that, second. We're looking for that. Okay, with that, any further comments? Seeing no further comments. Motion is properly before us. The motion to approve, uh, ordinance 19 dash 10, as amended by the motion, is now going to be voted on, and we will turn to our city recorder for that roll call vote.
Councilman Fifty-Simano?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have on our agenda Resolution 19 dash 41, awarding a contract to Norta Building Envelope Contractor for the replacement of our clubhouse roof at the Stone Bridge Golf Course. And I'll just, if I can get my computer to work again. There we go. That is for eighty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Uh, the roof is, I think they said nineteen years old, and we're going to put on a new roof, and that will be a fifty-year-life shingle that will go on there. And so that's the issue before us, to approve this. That's a good enough introduction, I guess, so to the council. This one doesn't have a public comment period.
Mayor, move for approval of Resolution 19 dash 41.
Second. Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hugh?
Uh.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Fifty-Simano?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Let's see, next, uh, I've still gotta get used to the new terminology. Consider application SMI dash three dash 2018 filed by Scott Godfrey. We're requesting final plat, they're requesting final plat approval for the Godfrey Industrial Park subdivision at 6173 West, 2100 South. And trying to, oh, yes, there we go. And I believe this one was going into two lots, wasn't it?
Yes.
Five lots down to two to make, yeah, and, uh, so, uh, it's just taking the same property instead of being five separate lots by essentially the same owners. It will now be two lots as they consolidated those down, for whatever purposes they deem appropriate. That's the issue before us, to the council for motion.
Move for approval of application SMI dash three dash two zero one eight.
Second. Okay, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Fifty-Simano?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have application SMI dash one dash 2019 filed by Mike Olson, representing property reserve. Final plat approval for the View subdivision located at 6500 South, 5600 West. Uh, this is the one that is immediately south of Walmart on 5600 West, down south there, and they're going to, uh, put a street in there. They're going to have, I believe, six different lots now in it. Uh, two on the front will be commercial, the others will be developed into townhomes, I believe.
Townhomes and also senior housing.
Senior housing, that's the one. Okay. Senior housing and assisted divestment. Okay, that's the issue before us, to the council.
Move for approval of application SMI dash one dash two zero one nine.
Second. Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Fifty-Simano?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next, we have, uh, application SMI dash two 2019 filed by Roman Fraser, again requesting final plat approval for a subdivision, Mountain View Business Plaza subdivision at 3330 South, 5600 West. And, uh, trying to recall the details on this one. Oh, that's why, this is the one where it was turned sideways, and it got me all confused. So, who, this one?
K-Mart property?
Yeah. Yeah, the K-Mart property, okay. And they're taking that, right now, they want to create a number of additional lots in order to be able to perhaps deal with those separately. Is there anything else pertinent in that? Uh, this is that property right at, well, K-Mart or the old Sears, whichever one, of course, they were same company, but different times. Anything else you wanna add to that? If not?
Mayor, move for approval of application SMI two dash 2019.
Second. Okay, properly before seeing any further, no further comments, we'll place that for a vote.
Councilman Fifty-Simano?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now, that completes our regular, our agenda for our regular city council meeting. We do have one more item of business, uh, but that will be our City Municipal Building Authority, which will immediately follow this for one item of business. And so with that, let's take care of our regular meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no, it passes unanimously for adjourn.
From a regular.
Call to order Municipal Building Authority tonight. Uh, opening ceremony, we, uh, just done a minute ago in roll call. There is council members here except Councilman Norfeld, and we have approval of minutes, uh, April, April 2nd, uh, 2019, and I will turn over to the council.
Mr. Chair, move for approval of the minutes? Second.
Great, and we have a motion, we have a second, and, uh, this motion, it passes unanimously. Oh, right, sorry. I go too fast, I won't step ahead of it. Okay, so, the, right, get anyone, um, uh, agreed to this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this motion, they pass it unanimously. And now we go to the Resolution 19, uh, dash zero two, and I will turn over to, um, city manager, Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, sir. So this is a fairly simple item, doesn't involve any cost or, or purchase or anything like that. It's a temporary construction easement, and as you know, these are usually items that are on the consent agenda in the regular meeting. The reason this one is in this meeting is because it happens to be associated with a building authority project under which we did bond financing for Station 73's construction, station, fire Station 73, for those in the audience. And for part of that project, we need to have a temporary construction easement to build a wall on the south edge of the property. There's a little more complication to that in the sense of, if you have read through this, turns out that the old chain link fence, I think it was, it was a different type of fence, was built about six feet-ish on our property in the, in the old construction. So this, under this project and this item, what will happen is, the new fence will be built on the correct property line in the manner that is discussed, which is, it's a concrete post and panel wall, so it'll be decorative, it'll match the one that's to the west boundary of Station 73 currently. And that is probably the most introduction and description you'll ever have me give on a temporary construction easement, right there. Yes, sir.
I have a question, then. Did the property owner, uh, give a brief about losing those six feet of property and having the wall placed on her, on actual property line?
My understanding is that they weren't really all that thrilled about it, but, uh, once we showed them and had the documentation, showed them that, yes, that was indeed the property line, and we needed the proper line, we need the property actually for transit, safe transit maneuverability of the vehicles there. We were able to work that at that point. Is there any other information to that that ought to be added, Jake?
No, sir, that's Station 71.
Oops, sorry, 71, not 73.
And we're putting the same wall as Station 72's.
Here's the one that takes, they're recording Jake.
Yeah, the reason I had Jake come up and do this is, as you all know, he's the project manager on these building projects.
Thank you, Mayor Jake Arslanian. Um, not to go against Mr. Pyle's, but it's Station 71, and the gentleman, the house owner that's been there almost, he has been there almost twenty-nine to thirty years. And first, of course, he was a little heartfelt that we're moving the fence line six feet on the east end, about two and a half feet on the west end of the property, but as soon as I showed him, uh, the type of wall we're putting in and the niceness of it, and it's painted on both sides, as it was at Station 72, he was all for it and changed his mind and signed the easement agreement, the temporary easement.
Thank you for answering that question.
Sure, thank you.
And that's very nice of him to do that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, and I will turn this motion, um, over to the council for action or a motion.
Move to approve Resolution 19 zero two. Second.
So I have a motion, I have a second, and I will turn over to the city recorder. Nicole, come in.
Mr. Fifty-Simano?
Aye.
Ms. Blank?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
And Chairman Hugh?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And we have one more motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.